Good evening. I'd like to call the regular school committee meeting to order, today being Tuesday, June 14th, 2016. This meeting tonight is being recorded by the PBD School Committee's recording secretary, Marge Macarelli. The matters listed on the agenda are those reasonably anticipated by the Chair, which may be discussed at the meeting. Not all items listed may in fact be discussed, and other items not listed may also be brought up for discussion to the extent permitted by law. I'd like to start our meeting with a moment of silence and the pledge of allegiance, and I'd like to dedicate this moment of silence to a young lady who, special woman, who is really an important part of our PBD educational system, at the Welch School teacher, Tanya Dyarchis in Weymouth. Tanya passed away over the weekend after an illness, and somebody who I knew personally going to school at South School, growing up many years ago, went to middle school as well, and to somebody who dedicated her life to teaching, helping students, and she left her mark, and someone who's going to be tremendously missed, and I hope everybody can keep her and her family in your thoughts during this time. But if everybody could please stand for a moment of silence in Tanya's memory. Please join me for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. We'll go to the next item, approval of minutes. Make a motion to approve minutes for May 24th, 2016.
Second.
Thank you. You've heard the motion by Mr. Rozignol, seconded by Mrs. Dunn, for approval of the minutes of May 24th, 2016, of the regular school committee meeting. Roll call, vote, please.
Mr. Hockman?
Yes.
Yes.
Present.
Yes.
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 Thank you. Approval of bills?
Thank you. I'd like to make a motion to approve warrant 3067 dated June 7th, 2016, in the amount of $44,939.0, subject to audit.
Second. Thank you. You've heard the motion by Mrs. Carpenter for approval of warrant 3067. That was seconded by Mr. Hockman. Roll call, vote, please.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to approve warrant 3068 dated June 14th, 2016, in the amount of $521,741.45, subject to audit.
Second. Thank you. You've heard the motion by Mrs. Carpenter for approval of warrant 3068, seconded by Mr. Hockman. Roll call, vote, please.
Mr. Hockman?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to approve warrant 3069 dated June 14th, 2016, in the amount of $152,748.83, subject to audit.
Second. Thank you. You've heard the motion by Mrs. Carpenter for approval of warrant 3069, seconded by Mr. Hockman. Roll call, vote, please.
Mr. Hockman?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. Go to the next item, continued business. Mrs. Dunn, anything new to report on the MSBA Higgins Project?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Nothing new from the last report. Just want to let everyone know that this Thursday at 4:00 PM, we are having our regularly scheduled monthly meeting at the Higgins.
Thank you, Mrs. Dunn. And we'll go now to second item, second readings. Mrs. Dunn, I'll turn it over to you as Chair of Policy and Standards.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Okay, for everyone's consideration, the following are all here this evening as a second reading on these policies. So the first one will be, I'd like to make a motion to approve for second reading, file GBEC, the Drug-Free Workplace Policy. So moved.
Second.
You've heard the motion by Mrs. Dunn for approval of the Drug-Free Workplace Policy, seconded by Mr. Rozignol. On the motion, Mr. Hockman?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you to Ms. Dunn. I see that the policy prohibits the manufacturing, distribution, dispensing, or possession, or use of controlled substances. It's prohibited in the district's workplace. And my concern is about possession of controlled substances. There are some controlled substances that are prescribed. Is this, is this policy intended to prevent staff members or personnel to have prescription medication that are controlled substances on them?
Through the Chair. Thank you. No, I believe that the, it's dealing with the unlawful possession. So if someone has a prescription that is not their own, that would be considered unlawful. So that's all that that's going to prohibit. And actually, this is our, this is our current policy. The only difference on this one, I'm trying to remember if I can, um...
Actually, Ms. Dunn, that's fine. I didn't see unlawful and how it modifies the rest of that paragraph. So thank you for pointing that out.
I think this is just an update on the reference, the legal references.
Any further comments? We'll go to a roll call, vote, please, for approval.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Mrs. Dunn?
Thank you. The next motion will be to approve file IHAMB, Teaching About Alcohol, Tobacco, and Drugs. This will be the second reading, and just wanted to see if there was a difference here. Just wanted to bring that forward for approval this evening. So moved.
Second. Thank you. You've heard the motion by Mrs. Dunn for approval of policy IHAMB, Teaching About Alcohol, Tobacco, and Drugs. It was seconded by Mr. Rozignol. Any comments? Seeing none, roll call, vote, please.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
And thank you. Again, this next motion will be to bring forward file JICH, Alcohol, Tobacco, and Drug Use by Students Prohibited, bringing forward for a second reading. And again, this, this, this policy and the previous one, the only new addition to these two is the final paragraph, which has now been required by DESC. So again, I will make a motion to approve for second reading JICH, Alcohol, Tobacco, and Drug Use by Students Prohibited. So moved.
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Dunn. You've heard the motion for approval of policy JICH, Physical Restraint of Students, seconded, oh, wait a minute.
Nope. Got ahead of self.
Yep. Alcohol, drug, Alcohol, Tobacco, and Drug Use by Students Prohibited. Sorry about that. Seconded by Mr. Rozignol. Any comments? Roll call, vote, please.
Mr. Hockman?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. I'd like to make a motion to approve file JKAA, Physical Restraint of Students, for a second reading. So moved.
Second.
Thank you. You've heard the motion by Mrs. Dunn for approval of policy JKAA, Physical Restrain of Students, seconded by Mr. Rozignol. Any comments? Seeing none, roll call, vote, please.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
And finally, I'd like to make a motion to approve the addendum to policy JJE, Faculty-Employee Fundraising. This has been amended and corrected in accordance with discussion at the last meeting. Thank you, Dr. Levine. And so I bring it forward for second reading, a second reading. So moved.
Second. Thank you. You've heard the motion for approval of policy JJE Addendum, seconded by Mr. Rozignol. Roll call, vote, please.
Mr. Hockman?
Yes.
Mr. Rozignol?
Yes.
Mrs. Carpenter?
Yes.
Mrs. Dunn?
Yes.
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 And just for everyone's information, the following page, it's permission, it's a permission slip. That will go into the policy manual. Probably, it will probably be labeled JJER, just for, just for clarification, so you know why it's there.
Thank you, Mrs. Dunn, for that report. Our next item, continued business, is voting in schools. Mr. Hockman, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to have an opportunity for us to have a conversation and a vote about voting in schools prior to the impending presidential election, which I think we all expect is going to be an extremely high turnout. I've had some conversations with City Clerk Tim Spanos about the concerns that exist with having, voting for a presidential election in which he anticipates in excess of 75% of registered voters to turn out in November. He has concerns about the Cavalry Church and the Smith Barn in particular, and with the Higgins coming back online, has expressed a desire to return Ward 4 Precinct 1 and Ward 4 Precinct 2 back to the Higgins. And with that, we took a vote in a former iteration of this body regarding voting in schools. In my conversations with Clerk Spanos, he is not interested in having voting take place at the Higgins for the September primary. He feels that it would impact and disrupt the opening of a new school too dramatically in order for voting to take place while, as we presently have it, school is in session. And school would be in session on primary day in September, but not on Election Day in November under our current school calendar. So with that, I felt that it was appropriate to put this matter back on the agenda and have a discussion regarding it. In addition, I did speak to City Solicitor Smrzynski this morning. As I said, this body in a former iteration did make, did have a conversation and a vote on this very subject. He, Attorney Smrzynski advised me that this is a completely new body, and we have every, every opportunity to procedurally just take this up as a matter of a motion. I was concerned about whether or not we needed to bring a motion to reconsider, and he said, absolutely not. It's a different, it's a completely different school committee. So in any event, with that, I, that's what I, I'd like to do tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Hockman. Any comments or thoughts on this topic? Mr. Rozignol?
Thank you. In your conversation with Mr. Spanos, why didn't he feel the need to bring this forward? I mean, if he has these concerns, I think it would have been more appropriate for him to come and, and state what his concerns are, so that we can have a dialogue in that manner. Did he express any reason why he was unwilling to come before us? I'm sorry, through the Chair.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Mr. Rozignol. I don't know that Mr. Spanos expressed a willingness or unwillingness to come tonight. I did talk to him about the time standards that are, that he needs to adhere to statutorily with regard to changing a polling place, and we're well within those time standards. He indicated to me that he would need this body to act, or, and he has to go to the City Council, I think, after we take this vote tonight, because it's the City Council that determines where polling places are actually situated within the city. So I think he needs to take that next step. And I believe he said to me that if that was all accomplished by August, it would provide him with enough time to mail, send out mailings and publications and notices to impacted voters for the November election. I just thought that it was appropriate. This is a matter that was on our agenda, I think, in December or January, in which, at which time we received communication from the City Council and their thoughts on this subject. And I think it's been about six or seven months since we've been trying to schedule a joint session for the subcommittee, the joint subcommittee between the school committee and the City Council. And we're approaching the end of our meeting calendar. So I just thought it was time that we take it up.
Yes, Mr. Rozignol?
Through the Chair. My one concern with doing this, for the Higgins in particular, especially in the manner that you laid out, I'm sorry, through the Chair. Having one polling place in September and then a second in November, I think in the same voting cycle, that may be confusing to some people. I understand the willingness to go back to the Higgins. I think that, I'll be perfectly clear. My position on voting in schools is as long as it's a separate entrance and a separate exit, I'm not opposed to voting in any public building. I think when you get into school buildings such as the Burke, or the Welch, or the McCarthy, where you're walking into a common area where there are kids and there are, you're, you're setting up for potential hazards. In my opinion, in my opinion only, if they're separate, and there's a separate entrance and a separate exit, I'm not opposed to voting in any public building. So I just want that to be said. But having this particular vote, and I agree with you, Mr. Hockman, I do think it's going to be a large voter turnout, and I do want the best facility that we can find. But splitting the baby and, and doing it in one place in September and then somebody, someplace else completely different in November, I just don't want that to be confusing to any voters. And that would be my one fear, doing it in this particular manner. And I completely agree with Mr. Spanos, according to what you said, not doing it in September because of a brand-new school and opening and logistics and timeframes. And that's why I would be hesitant to even allow this coming November. I would have no problem moving forward in this manner. But for this election, I think it would be difficult to get systems in place and having two different locations in the same voting cycle. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, if that was a question before me, through you, respectfully, that's not our job. I mean, that's the, the election, the Election Commission determines the most suitable places for elections, and it's their job to make the analysis as to where that would be. We made a vote at one point a few years ago prohibiting the use of school buildings for elections. And I think in order to move forward procedurally, we need to either affirm that or, or, or take a vote that says that they have the ability to go back into schools. The only reason that I think the Election Commission left the Higgins voluntarily is because of the construction that was taking place. I think but for the construction, they would have stayed at the Higgins. They expressed a preference to remain at the Higgins if, and they only went to the Cavalry and the church and the Smith Barn because they needed other locations within Ward 4. There is no, the Cavalry Church, Smith Barn may be a little better suited, but there's absolutely no way that the Cavalry Church is going to support a 75% voter turnout and not violate, in my opinion, voters' rights by having to turn people away at 8 o'clock when the polls close. If, all we're saying by this motion that I'll make when we're done with the conversation is to allow voting to take place in schools. It's not, if the Election Commission feels that it's not appropriate to split the baby, as you say, then that's, that's their purview. That's up to them. We're just giving them the opportunity to say that here we have this new building, this new municipal building paid for by taxpayers, and it's going to be allowed to be used for an election so that the democratic process can take place in the manner that they feel is most suitable. That's all.
So I don't want to go completely back and forth, but Mr. Rozignol, I'll let you respond briefly, but I know others would like to speak.
I will be brief. I agree with some of the points that you made, Mr. Hockman, as far as it's absolutely under the purview of the Voting Commission as far as where they see in the logistics. It is still our buildings, and I want to make sure that they're as safe as possible. So having it not there in September and then in November, logistically for our buildings, will be an interesting matter, considering it's never been done before in this particular building. And with all of the nuances that are going to be happening with a brand-new building, I just, I'm weary of splitting the two. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rozignol. Mrs. Carpenter?
Thank you. So in regards to this issue, I too am concerned that the Board of Electioneers did not bring it forward to us. As you've said, Mr. Hockman, it is not our job. So I would have expected them to come and make a formal request as to wanting to go back into the building. We do have forms that they can fill out if they'd like to use our buildings. So I did not hear from them, so I'm not sure exactly what would make any of us able to decide if either of these facilities can hold a presidential election. And if what you're telling me is correct, that there'll be an issue at the church or the Smith Barn, then they should seriously consider some of the other buildings that we have voting in, to see if they can seriously hold a presidential election, because we have some other buildings that are rather small, on one-way streets, parking issues. So that would be up to them. In correspondence that we have received from them before in regards to Ward 4, they did offer up alternative locations, and I'm not sure if they're going to apply to those. And specifically in their letter, they mentioned moving to Temple Beth Shalom. I don't know if that's someplace they'd like to consider. I have serious reservations about them going into the Higgins for many reasons, as you all know my position. I don't have to state it again. But in addition to that, if it were to move back into the Higgins at this current time, we do not know what the logistics will be. We do have to take down the old building. I'm not sure what the parking situation will be. We have to redo the fields. I haven't been told by the Board what room they're going to be using. Another issue that I do have is, as part of the bargaining unit, we did bargain into the Paris contracts that we would be using the Higgins exclusively for professional development on that day. And we've identified most of the open space in that building to be used for school use on that day. So I appreciate the brand-new building and letting taxpayers come in, and I welcome them to our many craft fairs and our many chorus concerts and our sporting events, and there'll be many opportunities to come in and see the building. But I think at this time, and for me, at any time, that they, they should probably look elsewhere. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Carpenter. Mrs. Dunn?
Thank you. Excuse me. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As you all know, it's always been a five-to-one vote. So I'm very happy to think of bringing voting into the schools. But I do have a very, very big concern with the new Higgins. And I will explain it to you. We have, I'm assuming they will need the, to use the, I'm sorry, the gymnasium. My worry is, we have a brand-new gym floor. It is a wooden floor. If you go to any new building, unless you're in athletic shoes or sneakers, you do not walk on a bare wooden floor. I honestly do not believe we could have voting in the gym at the Higgins unless we purchase one of those rubberized coverings to protect that, that floor. If folks were going into the Higgins to vote on September 8th, it would be three days old, seriously. And in November, okay, it would be four weeks old. I don't know what one of those costs. I know they're very expensive. I think it's something that we do need to have for that building eventually. But it's not part of the, the current fixtures or furnishings of the building. And I don't know how long it would take to obtain one either. So that's a concern that I have, you know, as, as the head of the committee. I want to make sure that that floor is protected, if that's the area they use. Again, I don't know what area Mr. Spanos is looking at, so, you know, the cafeteria would be different, but logistically, that, that is a concern to me.
Thank you, Mrs. Dunn. Mr. Miko?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through the Chair to the Committee. The voting, voting in schools issue came up over and over. Obviously, I didn't hear from City Clerk either, but I heard from a lot of voters. A lot of voters want the voting back into schools, especially Ward 4. November, I think we had a less than 20% voter turnout. And I can, I can tell you, because I was there, the corner of Franklin and Chestnut was a dangerous spot with 20% turnout. We had a lot of near misses, right there, just automobiles. At 75%, that area cannot hold the capacity of voters. I do agree with Mr. Spanos and with Mr. Hockman. I can see September, you're going to probably have a lower turnout. You could probably have it at the Cavalry. But come November at a 75% turnout, I just think the Cavalry can't, can't withstand that type of volume, and that could be a problem. By then, I would hope that we'd have a little bit more of a traffic, understand, traffic issue or understanding over at the Higgins where we can get people in and out. But looking forward in the future, I'd really like this Board to take a look at the way we look at Election Day. And there's a reason why we only have 18% or people who are uninformed or people who don't want to vote. It's because we've forgotten about it in our schools. And I'm not just talking about here. I'm talking about across the country. I'd like to have, not only voting in schools, but I'd like to make that day a civics lesson, a full-day civics lesson where K to 12, everyone's just doing something democratic that day. And I, I just think that we really need to look at that as well. But voting in schools, this is what I, what I've, what I came across over the last six months. People just want it, and sometimes you have to listen to your constituents. So that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Miko. Okay, I'll go to Mrs. Dunn, then Mr. Rozignol.
It's just a point of information. Usually on, on the presidential elections, the students participate in kids' voting, which is run by, by the PBD Ed Foundation. And it's a really wonderful program. I know it goes from elementary and middle school. And they, it really is a wonderful civics lesson. And you'll, you'll get to see how they, how they unfold that. So that is something that's very nice. At the high school, they, they do all kinds of different activities that day, but the K to 8 is pretty structured, and especially on a presidential election.
Thank you, Mrs. Dunn. Do you want to respond to that, Mr. Miko, quickly?
Through the Chair. Not on that, but on the issue of the, the new floor. And I'm aware that, thank you for bringing that, Mrs. Dunn, about the new floor. I think that could be easily addressed. There are uniform companies out there that rent out those long rugs where, you know, you probably need, I don't know, 10 to 20, I don't know. I don't know how many. It could easily be done for the day to, excuse me, just get people across the floor to their voting booth and back out. I don't see that, I don't see that as a, a major issue. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman? Just to lighten the mood, it's a really rough election this year. You're going to have a lot of angry people. I don't want anybody stomping on that floor till we protect every square inch of that wood.
Thank you. Mr. Rozignol, your turn?
Thank you. Through the Chair. I, I, to Mr. Miko. I appreciate your sentiment as far as wanting voting back in schools, and I'm not necessarily opposed to that, as I mentioned in the beginning. But having two different voting locations in the same voting cycle, I think, will be confusing to people. So that's, that's my first fear. And I thought Ms. Dunn actually brought up a great point. If you go to any brand-new high school, which, my, my daughter happens to play basketball, so I've gone to Tewksbury High School, which has a brand-new- I've gone to Tewksbury High School, which has a brand-new floor, and I've gone to Beverly High School, the first thing they'll say is nothing but sneakers on, and there's monitors like we have on the turf fields, no chewing gum, all the whole nine yards. So, I'll restate it again. I'm not opposed to voting in the schools, but that is going to be a concern. It really will be. If it's in the cafeteria, that's not a problem. But as Ms. Carpenter had mentioned in her previous remarks, if we are already having staff development there this election cycle, I don't know if we can house both things at the same time in the same venue. I think that, logistically, will be difficult. But ultimately, that's up to the superintendent and his staff to come up with an alternative location if this board sees fit. The other thing that's really bothering me at the moment is, is I really wish Mr. Spanos came before us and just asked. This is something that we've talked about in the past. This is something that we've all beat up a number of different times in a number of different ways. If he thought that there was going to be an issue with this, I would rather him come before us, lay out the issues that he's anticipating, so that we can then make an informed decision. Right now, the last thing I ever want to do is I want to make a rash decision without having all of the facts in front of us. And I think if Mr. Spanos came before us, or the Voting Commission, which they have in the past, and we've had great dialogue, I think if they said, "These are my concerns, this is where I would like to have it," because as Ms. Carpenter said, there are other alternative locations in Ward Four in particular, but in the city in general, that could be looked at. So, I don't even know if his first place would be the Higgins. So, with that, through the chair, to the chair, do you know if we need to make this vote this evening, or whether we could have Mr. Spanos come before us our next meeting to lay out what his thoughts are, his plans are, as far as moving forward with any voting location?
I don't think we need to make a vote this evening. I do think that it's something that we, I think, probably should decide, if not tonight, pretty quickly. I will say that Mr. Spanos did mention that to me, his concerns about the Higgins as well. And I don't think there'd be any problem maybe holding this to the next meeting, maybe inviting Mr. Spanos to come. And, I'm sorry, he has concerns about the other two locations, that's what I meant to say, for the presidential election. So, I think there's been great points made. I don't think there has to be a vote today, but I do think it's probably something that we should vote, you know, within the next couple of meetings, because I think there will be some time. I didn't even think of your point, which is a good one, about two different voting spots for the same election. I do think it will be a dramatic difference in the number of people that come to vote, and I think there are some methods we could take, the Code Red system and maybe some others, to get the word out about that, that could maybe help on that. But that's a good point I never thought of. So, no, I don't think that's necessary today, but probably in the next meeting or two. And I'll turn it back to you, Mr. Rosignol.
Thank you. Me personally, I would rather have Mr. Spanos before us so we can have the same conversation with his input and exactly what he's thinking. Because the other thing that I would like to express to him is, to me, for an 18 percent turnout, or a 15 percent turnout in some of these elections, to have so many polling locations throughout the city, I think is a waste of resources. Whether they're in a school or not, one thing that I would like to see is one voting location, an ideal location per precinct throughout the district, or per ward throughout the district. You have six locations instead of 12. You isolate it to buildings that can house all three precincts in each ward, and I think it'll be a much better streamlined process than what we have right now, which is kind of like a scattergun all over the city. So, like I said before, I don't like to make a rash decision. I want to have a great dialogue, and I thank you, Mr. Hockman, for bringing this forward, because I do think it's a good discussion to have. I just want to make sure everybody that has a vested interest is at the table having the same discussion. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Hockman?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to be clear, I am not here, nor did I put this on the agenda at the request of Mr. Spanos or the Election Commission. I did it as a member of the PBD School Committee. Through you, Mr. Mayor, to either Dr. Levine or Ms. Murtagh, in the event that this vote takes place and we permit voting to take place in schools, and the Election Commission elects to have voting take place at the Higgins, and they use the gymnasium or some other room that some members are concerned about, would we have the ability to take protective measures for the flooring, or walls, or any other part of the building that there are concerns about?
Through the chair. I don't know the answer to that, quite frankly. I don't know that we've ordered a covering for the floor. I think Mrs. Dunn brings up a great point. I'll have to, Thursday, we have a school building committee meeting, and I think that we should bring it up then, and if we haven't ordered one, we probably should, through the project.
Through the chair. We should. I think we definitely need to either look into purchase or rent, just to find out what we can do to protect that floor, because it really is a very important consideration on upkeep of that building as far as making sure that we maintain the perfection of whatever you do with the basketball, Mr. Mayor, when you bounce it and it goes in the basket. So, you know, yeah, we have to, you know, it's sacred now. But I mean, the taxpayers have paid a fortune for that building, and we don't want to damage it. And it will actually be something, if it hadn't come up now, I'm sure it would have come up the next time we thought of a non-athletic event taking place in that gymnasium. So, definitely, we'll discuss that on Thursday and through the mayor. Dr. Levine, if we could speak with Mr. Healy or with Mr. Jacks about inquiring into cost or prices, just so we might have some idea of what this would entail. And, we also ought to look into, you know, how much time it would take to order something. In blue.
Through the mayor.
In blue.
I will do that with Mr. Marx, I think, tomorrow. And we also need to know how long it would take to lay it out, pick it up. We'll take a look at that tomorrow, and I'll have an answer for you. Or we will have an answer for you on Thursday. I do want to make one point, Mr. Mayor, this might be the first time I didn't have an answer to a question this year.
Put that in the minutes, Marge, in bold.
Still, your floor, Mr. Hockman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. See, this is a great byproduct of this conversation, because it's likely that we're going to have a graduation in that gymnasium. So, isn't it nice that we're having the conversation now to be thoughtful of how to preserve that building? But again, through the mayor to Ms. Murtagh, I believe, for professional development, I'm sure that you, if this committee were to vote for allowing voting in schools and the Election Commission decided to use the Higgins, which they may or may not, that's not going to be any part of the motion. It's just going to allow voting in schools. Would you be able to find ample space within the Higgins to have professional development for our wonderfully talented paraprofessionals?
I will do my best to figure that out. Yes.
And lastly, I think that we're maybe over-debating this. This isn't, this isn't an invitation for the Election Commission to have voting in schools. This isn't, this isn't an affirmation of their desire to have voting in schools. This is merely a vote to give them the opportunity to vote on schools. I believe under the city charter, it still remains the obligation of the city council to determine polling locations. This just gives the Voting Commission and the city council the opportunity to use public schools, municipal buildings, that are funded and paid for by taxpayers, that house, and I agree with Mr. Miko, I would like to go, move forward even on collective bargaining and have Election Day a full school day. Have it a full school day, and let kids, you know, be in the building when people are coming to exercise one of the most basic and fundamental democratic rights that we have in this country. And, you know, we heard the mayor talk earlier tonight outside at the vigil for the victims in Orlando, and we heard the superintendent talk tonight at the wonderful celebration for some graduates and some programs, and some retirement statements for some teachers and staff members and talented people. But what a great country we have. What a wonderful country we have. People die every single day in this world to fight for the rights that we are born into, and that most basic, fundamental right is the right to vote for our representative democracy. And I agree with Mr. Miko, wholeheartedly, an educator for, I think, a decade and a half, that it was, we couldn't have a better civics lesson for our kids. And I acknowledge that what Ms. Dunn states, and that the PBD Ed Foundation does do a wonderful job having kids voting, but I think that's different. That's different than seeing your neighbors, it's different than seeing your family members drive and walk into your school, where you go to school every single day, so that they can vote for their elected representatives. I think it's an important function. It happened, you know, when I was kids, I think it happened when you were kids, and I know the world's a little bit different today, but we also have a lot of security measures in place that we didn't have back then. But that's a whole separate issue. That's a whole separate issue. To answer Mr. Rosignol's question, Mr. Mayor, I brought, I put this on the agenda tonight, anticipating that it would be asked to be moved to another meeting, and we wouldn't take a vote tonight. And I think the last meeting on our calendar for this year is June 28th, so I would ask that it be placed on June 28th's calendar. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hockman. I do have a couple of other people that want to speak before we act on a motion. I wanted, first, to go to Mr. Olympio, who hasn't spoken yet, then I'm going to go to Mrs. Carpenter.
Through the chair. Mr. Hockman, thank you so much for bringing this up, and Ms. Dunn, you brought up a great point about, you know, the floor and protecting the floor. So, I would think two weeks from now, we'll have better information on the logistics of it, too. And plus, too, I would like and appreciate if Mr. Spanos, you know, came to the next meeting and really gave his two cents in how he sees things are going to work come the fall. Certainly give me a better opportunity to make an informed decision.
Thank you, Mr. Olympio. Mrs. Carpenter?
Thank you. You know, Mr. Hockman said that this doesn't have to be debated as much as it has, but he's pointed out many items that I have discussed in all of the years that I've been on this committee. So, I'd like to point out a few things that I noticed. If we're going to have a problem voting at the church because it's dangerous on the road, or there's not enough space, then I think the Board of Registros might want to look at the Burke School as well, that's a one-way street. That could become potentially very dangerous. They might want to look at the West, that's a one-way street, very small, narrow streets. We have the Welch in the South that are on very small residential streets. So, if we're talking about traffic issues, they're everywhere. They're at all of our polling locations. We have given plenty of time to have our locations revamped. There is an issue, there is a problem why we have low voter turnout. It's not working at the schools. So, why would you want to keep putting it back there? I have debated this issue over and over and over. Whatever the will of the committee is, the will of the committee is. After a while, it's just going to be whatever it is. Things need to change, but sometimes when I sit here and I listen to, it's just, it's the same old thing over and over and over. You want to talk about a wonderful civics lesson, and the children can go and vote. Yes, on Election Day, when there's no school, they get to walk into the building with their parents and their family and vote. When we had Election Day in November and school was open as a full day, not one child left their classroom. They did not go in and vote or see the process. The teachers didn't want to let them out of their classrooms. I've done a lot of work on this, a lot of homework, and you can say you need to listen to your constituents. Yes, you do. You also need to listen to the people who are in that building on that day, and it's their concern, and we had petitions signed, we've had many people come to the meetings voicing their concerns. It's not really that big of a deal. Obviously, the voting isn't working out too well where it is. So, maybe we need to find a different day, a different location, put more of them together. There's so many other options, and we have lists and lists of other places that they can go, with plenty of parking. So, again, I welcome all of the taxpayers and everyone to come into our buildings. As I've said before, we have wonderful school events, we have wonderful craft shows, we have great sporting events, and our doors are open all of those times. We can put this on for the next agenda, and we'll see how it shakes out, but those are my opinions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Carpenter. We have Mr. Rosignol, then Mrs. Dunn.
Thank you. I'll be brief. I just don't want to make a blanket statement of letting voting happen to all of our schools. As I mentioned previously, the thing that concerns me is, if you look at any sex offender registration, they're all over the place, including in this city. And I appreciate Mr. Hockman with his civic lesson and all of that, but there are still bad people that live in these United States, unfortunately. And I think having any John Q. Public being able to walk past a classroom to go vote is just setting up a danger that we don't necessarily need. As long as the school has a separate entrance and a separate exit, I am absolutely 100% in favor of voting in schools. They're a public entity, they're a public building, they're the community's property, I think, and I welcome any and all. But when you're walking past, at the Burke School, you used to literally walk past kindergarten classes to go vote. That's upsetting to me. You go to any school tomorrow, you have to check in, you have to show your license, you have to sign in, you have to go, in some cases, get escorted to your child's classroom. So, one, two, three days a year, depending upon the year, special elections and what have you, anybody, good, bad, or indifferent, can walk into that building unannounced and have access. And I know somebody's going to say, "Well, there's a cop there." Yes, they're in the polling area, not necessarily in the entrance. So, that's my concern, and I would love to have this conversation with Mr. Spanos. I mean, right now, we have two polling places in each ward, one through six. That's 12 places. If we knock that down to one each district, the city's saving money. And respectfully, Ms. Carpenter, I don't think voter turnout has anything to do with anything that we're talking about right now, whether we have it in schools, we have it here, we have it anywhere. Voter turnout's low because people are upset with the system we have. It has nothing to do with where they're going to mark their X. It's because they're sick and tired of politicians playing politics and not getting things done. So, that is a completely separate argument as far as why people aren't coming out to vote. At least, that's my opinion. But as far as making a blanket statement just to open it up to all buildings, I can't consciously do that. I really cannot. If we pick and choose specific schools that we want them or allow them to have, I have great respect for them, and I know, as Mr. Hockman said, it's their job to come up with the logistics of it, but ultimately, the safety of our kids is number-one priority. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rosignol. Mrs. Dunn?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Actually, I will, I'm very glad that we're going to put this on to the next meeting, because I think that if it's coming up, you know, as a new item for our new members, that they should be afforded the same courtesy that we had previously, which was to debate this and to discuss this, because there were a lot of different viewpoints. Every time we discussed it, people were very passionate in what they were saying. And, Mr. Hockman, everything you were saying is everything that I said every meeting. Every meeting, I brought up the fact that this was a great civics lesson, that these were taxpayer buildings, that we should allow the voting to take place in the schools, that we could put in the proper protections, that we would make sure of that, that there were many different alternatives that we should look at, and I fought, and I fought, and I fought. So, it was nice to hear your speech, especially in light of the fact that I lost every vote, five to one. So, politics does change as time goes along, and I do think that it is appropriate to have this discussed in full so that our two new members are able to hear from the very well-thought-out reasons. I never agreed with it, but I did support my colleagues because they had very valid concerns that they brought forward. And over the years, I have explained that to many of the voters who have spoken to me and the taxpayers who were upset about the original decision, because that's one of the best civics lessons, that we can disagree but still work together. This was a very volatile issue, and I think that we owe everyone the courtesy This was a very volatile issue, and I think that we owe everyone the courtesy of hearing it again. However, I also think that the proper way to do this would be for Mr. Spanos and the Board of Registrazes to request what they would like. It would be the proper way to do it, to find out exactly what their desire is. And just to let everyone know, that meeting with the, the meeting we're supposed to have with the liaison with the city council, it's not a very finite issue. It really is to correct a misunderstanding that occurred when, when the city clerk was speaking to the city council, just explaining what was going on with voting. And it took off from there and ended up being something that is, it definitely involves voting in the schools, but it's a very, very specific issue that our hope is to just correct that so that they can understand the position of the school committee at that time. It really, it's unfortunate that it happened, but it truthfully, it's just kind of complicated at the moment, but it doesn't have any bearing on this board making the decision regarding voting in the schools.
Okay, thank you. So, Ms. Hockman?
Just lastly and briefly, this is never going to be a motion about telling the Board of Registrazes to vote in schools. This is simply going to be a motion that gives them the opportunity to use schools as polling places. That's all it's going to be. Mr. Spanos's input, while I certainly am happy to acquiesce and listen to my colleagues and who are asking for this to take place in two weeks, I'm happy to do that. But the conversation about where polling places are going to be isn't part of this motion. This motion is simply, right now, there's a prohibition that, based on a vote that was taken four or five years ago, that the city council cannot consider schools as polling places. And the Higgins was taken offline because of construction and only because of construction. And this just gives them the opportunity to consider it. That's all it's going to be. But I'm happy to push this off for two weeks, happy to ask Mr. Spanos, or maybe the, Dr. Levine can ask Mr. Spanos, to appear before us or perhaps the entire Election Commission if it's the will of the committee. That's just, that's just not what I'm asking for here. What I'm asking for is simply to provide the city council and the Election Commission with the opportunity to consider using schools as polling places. That's all.
So, Ms. Hockman, you made a motion to hold this for two weeks?
I'll make a motion. Please put it on the calendar for June 28th. That's our next meeting.
And I'll, I'll, thank you, seconded by Mr. Amico, all in favor. And Dr. Levine and I will speak to Mr. Spanos and offer an invitation to the board and our, Mr. Spanos and possibly some board members as well. Okay? Thank you. Public participation, is there anyone in the audience that would like to come forward and speak on a topic of their choosing? The microphone is open. Next item, superintendent's report. Dr. Levine, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would like to let the community know that on Thursday from 12 to 5, there is a celebration of life for Tanya Wentworth at the Dan Bussport Yacht Club. And I know that many school officials, teachers, and some parents and students will be walking through to pay their respects. I don't have the particulars of what kind of a celebration it is, but I would assume that it's an opportunity to connect with the family. So I wanted to announce that. I would ask for approval from the school committee for a field trip that you have in your packet to go to Greensboro, North Carolina. Since it is overnight, the school committee needs to approve.
Motion to follow the recommendation of the superintendent.
Second.
Heard the motion by Mr. Rosignol, seconded by Mrs. Dunn. All in favor? It's a vote? Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Hockman on the motion?
I abstain from this vote.
Okay.
Thank you. I'd also like to bring to your attention $1,250 gift to Mass General Hospital. This is from some of our kids at the high school who are involved in the Blanket Project. I happened to be there that day that they presented the project to Mass General, and I just want to make note of it again in public that these kids have done a tremendous job. In one day, they went to every classroom in the high school and raised $1,250 for this project. So I just want to commend our kids once again, as they represent us so well, and ask for the school committee to accept, to direct the superintendent to send a note of thanks to each kid. And I will.
Motion to follow the recommendation of the superintendent.
Second. You heard the motion by Mrs. Dunn, seconded by Mr. Rosignol. All in favor of the vote? Thank you.
I would ask the school committee to accept a donation in memory of Dave Blanchard, who passed away. And this donation was made to the athletic department through Phil Sheridan by Mary Ann Bates and her family.
Motion to accept with gratitude.
Second.
Heard the motion by Mr. Rosignol, seconded by Mrs. Dunn. All in favor of approval? Thank you.
Ward Two Councilor has made a request to use the Welch School for an activity that he's asking to waive the charges for that event, and the superintendent is recommending that we do so.
On Dr. Levine's topic? Mr. Rosignol?
Thank you, through the chair. I noticed in his letter, he made reference to waiving the $50 energy fee. Unfortunately, that's the only fee in this proposal that we cannot waive. But with that said, I'd make a motion to waive all other incurred fees that we can waive, but if we could send a letter back to Mr. McGinn just stating that we're unable to waive the $50 energy fee. So moved.
Second.
Heard the motion by Mr. Rosignol, seconded by Mrs. Dunn. On the motion, Mr. Hockman?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I historically vote against these waivers. I spoke to Councilor McGinn earlier today. I will vote against this waiver as well. What this winds up being is a subsidy by the school department for the Ward Two Fourth of July celebration. And while the Fourth of July celebration is a great city and civics lesson, I just historically have voted against these waivers. So, that's all.
Thank you, Mr. Hockman. Why don't we do a roll call? Mr. Rosignol, do you have a comment on the motion?
On the motion? His letter did state that by us waiving the fees, he'd be able to spend more of his dollars towards the event itself. So with that said, I think that this would be a worthwhile endeavor. So moved.
On the motion, on the motion, Mr. Amico?
Through the chair of the committee. I agree with Mr. Rosignol, the $50 fee, he's putting it towards and back into the community, back into the celebration, so I would be okay with waiving that fee.
Let's do a roll call vote on this motion. Mr. Hockman?
No.
Mr. Rosignol?
Yes.
Mrs. Carpenter?
Yes.
Mrs. Dunn?
Yes.
Mr. Olympio?
Yes.
Mr. Amico?
Yes.
The vote passes five to one.
I take it a minute, I enjoyed that, doing that right there. I'm not going to lie. I enjoyed that.
Thank you. With that, the superintendent's report is complete tonight.
Thank you, Dr. Levine. So we have three written communications. We have a communication from Abby Gore regarding a trip to Italy and Sicily. We have a communication from the mayor regarding the fiscal 2016 appropriation transfer request that is on for a council meeting coming up next week. And number three, a communication from the city clerk, Tim Spanos, regarding the finance committee of the whole meeting on June 15th, 2016, tomorrow evening when we were taking up the budget. Any comments or questions or thoughts on those, any of those communications? Mrs. Dunn?
Make a motion to receive.
Second. Heard the motion to receive the communications. Mrs. Dunn made the motion, seconded by Mr. Hockman. Any comments? Mrs. Dunn?
Just want to thank Mrs. Gore. It's a beautiful letter and it really is very interesting to hear about that field trip. And it's very nice, I'd encourage other staff to give us reports back on some of the field trips that students take because it's something important for, I think, for everyone to know. And by making it part of our school committee record, it does become public record so people can learn more about it. And also, just, it is a bit off-topic, but tonight, some of the volunteers that were here and honored, one is a World War II vet who comes in, he's been coming in for the last 10 years, speaking in Mrs. Gore's class. So she really goes the extra mile with her students, and it was nice to see him being honored tonight.
And Mr. Pimenta, he has been doing that for a number of years. That's great. Okay. All in favor of receipt of those motions? Our next item is subcommittee reports. Education Subcommittee, Mr. Hockman?
Nothing to report at this time.
Finance, Mrs. Carpenter?
Thank you. I am happy to report that we have settled with Unit B, the PBD School Administrators' Association. I just wanted to say thank you to everyone that was involved. Dr. Levine, Ms. Martig, the Finance Committee, and Unit B. They were very thoughtful conversations, debated items, and I think we settled a very nice contract, and I just wanted to say thank you. So pending ratification, that unit is settled.
And thank you, Mrs. Carpenter, for your work in that regard. I know it's a lot of hard work. Thank the committee members as well. That's good news. Our school safety Subcommittee, Mrs. Carpenter?
Nothing to report.
Thank you. Athletics and Wellness, Mr. Rosignol?
Nothing to report at this time.
Quality and Standards, Mrs. Dunn?
Nothing to report at this time.
City Council and Advisory Boards?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The meeting with the City Council Subcommittee is still pending, and the meeting, the next meeting for the Parent Advisory Board will take place Monday, June 20th. It will be at 7:00 PM at the Higgins. That will be the last Parent Advisory Board meeting of the school year, and I actually think it will be the last meeting at Higgins.
Thank you, Mrs. Dunn. Nothing to report on building and grounds? New business? Items for next agenda can be handled in the regular course? Oh, hold on one second, Mrs. Carpenter?
In regards to building and grounds, do we have any dates set for celebrations or wall knocking downs or anything going through the old Higgins? Did I miss that?
Nope. In fact, I think tomorrow I can get out a, I'm waiting for one final response from Jack McCarthy at the MSBA regarding a couple of dates that we're proposing for a couple of ceremonies. We're looking to do a brief ceremony next week, kind of a symbolic handing over of the keys that you guys will certainly be notified of and invited to. And then also, more of the formal celebration in September, we're looking at a Saturday. So just waiting for confirmation from the MSBA. Certainly, they are a huge part of the success that we've had with that project. So I think tomorrow I can get out a list of dates, confirmed dates for the upcoming celebrations.
A lot of people have been asking if they're going to have an opportunity to do like final walkthroughs and stuff of the old Higgins.
Well, I can speak to that. We just scheduled a meeting and we're going to be notifying, getting the word out in a number of, number of different ways. But on Monday, June 27th, from 4:00 to 7:00, we are going to have a Say Goodbye to Higgins event, on which anybody is welcome, is invited to the Higgins to kind of walk through the halls, the gym, wherever they would like. We will have some students that will be escorts, and also, we're going to have a neighborhood meeting following that, for the neighbors, give them some updates on the construction and the demolition that's going to be taking place. So we're looking at Monday, June 27th, 4:00 to 7:00, to allow for anybody to say goodbye and maybe have a little special gift for those that would like to come. That's right. So that's a good idea, actually.
We can't do that. They already figured out the cost of what they're going to get back when they demolish the school, and 95% of that building's going to be recycled, and that will help us with our lead silver award.
Mrs. Dunn?
Yes, the wet blanket has spoken.
That's important. So, but we do, because there's going to be only a brief period of time in between the last day of school, which is next Tuesday, the 21st, and then the abatement work and the ultimate demolition, which we're looking to start right away. In fact, the, there's been some work already done to the power boiler room and the power plant, and that will be taken down first. But right after July 4th, there'll be a little bit of time for abatement, but then they're going to start the demolition work. So there's only a short period of time, a short window, but I thought that, and I, all of us have talked about this in the past, it'll be terrific to allow anybody that would come like, just walk through those wondrous halls and, you know, the magnificence that is the old Higgins that I can't wait is down. Yes, Dr. Levine?
Yeah, thank you. I just want to make it clear to my wife that I did not choose that date. It's our anniversary. The mayor chose that date.
Excuse me, point of information. I would like to make it clear to my husband that I too did not pick that date because it is my anniversary as well.
Are Dr. Levine and Ms. Carpenter married?
On that note, items for next agenda will be handled in the regular course. A great meeting, and I'll get a more formal email out to everybody notifying, specifying the dates, making sure everybody has plenty of notice as to what's going to take place. Thanks, everyone.
Motion to adjourn.